We really shouldn't be on discussion.
We should be locked.
I don't care what goes on. Everybody's got bills.
All right, we're gonna get started here. We're gonna call this meeting to order today's date is September 3rd, 2025, and this is how City Common Counts meetings. Whoever could please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our own.
Thank you all, you may be seated. All right. We do need to have one removal on the agenda, and that's under new business item A, Ivy Tech lease, that's something that's handled by the Board of Works. It was put on their agenda and was table pending further review, so if we could just strike item A under new business.
Mayor, could I ask for clarification on that? You know, I sat through the Board of Works meeting, but so the original lease was approved by the Board of Works?
That's what I understand, yeah. I mean, if I'm wrong, I'm...
Do you have documentation of that?
I can go find it. But if I'm wrong, we can make it back to the council.
Well, I just, I'd like to have the research before, before the next meeting, because I find it unusual that the Board of Works didn't commit us for a multi-year lease. That just seems unusual to me. I don't know, Gerald, maybe you know something about that, but... So, anyway, I would appreciate some research on that before, before I could...
No, won't be a problem.
I think you'll have to go back several years.
Yeah, I can, well, if Jeff is here, he could answer, but typically, the Board of Works, yeah. The Board of Works typically handles those kinds of things, rents and so forth, so...
Started June 4th, 2018.
It would've been before then.
Pardon?
The original lease would've been before then, because Barbara Ewing, under her term, she's one at work to negotiate that, that payment, the dollar a year. What, that, 2018 was Senator Mayor Adams' term. But we'll go back and research it, I can get you, we got all the copies of the leases and extensions, we can provide the council or whoever wants it, every one of them, for review or whichever. So, did you need more clarity or just keep that removed, or is that good? So, remove that?
That's fine.
Okay, okay, I just wanna make sure. Is there any other additions to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Gerald, second by Brian, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question carried. Next, your presentation of minutes for approval, these are from your August 4th meeting. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes?
I, I need a clarification of this.
Okay.
And to be honest with you, it has to do under the mayor's report.
Okay.
The one of the sentence said, Councilman Clemens said he felt the city was overdue for wastewater rate increase since the last rate study was in 2018, and the city ordinance recommends a rate study to be held every three years. If I said overdue for a rate increase, that is not what I meant. I meant that the rate study, which the ordinance calls for to be held every three years, is what we were overdue for. I may have said that, Connie, I didn't go back and listen to the tape.
And I know Penny did these minutes for me, and she does listen to the tape, but I, I read it and I did not go back and listen to anything, so...
I apologize if that's what I said, that is not what I meant. I meant that the ordinance says that a rate study is to be held every three years, and to my knowledge, we haven't had a rate study done since...
This was the meeting that we couldn't hardly hear when we did this, so that could be...
Well, I have a comment on that. When we did this lead water line replacement, and that thing, and that packet, it said at this time, no sewer rate is needed. I believe it's in that, what we filed.
I'd have to go back and look, I remember it being discussed, you know, when we worked on that, but I don't...
It was in the rates and charges, I might have it in my...
Yeah, I don't...
I don't disagree with you, Larry, that, you know, that's what happens when you don't do things three, four, or five years, and it gets four behind, you gotta play catch-up.
What are, what are you saying about the...
When we did the, the study, when we got the lead line replacement, and whether rates and charges, and we, I thought it was in that deal there, at this time, no sewer rate was needed.
I don't...
I'd have to find that.
I don't remember that, Gerald.
But I can be standing, you know, be corrected. Because we had like three different options on the water rate increase, and we did the 31% or something, I don't remember, but...
We will double check what you...
It's in that, I thought it was in that part of that deal when we did the copper lead line replacement.
I know which, I know exactly which report you're talking about, so I can try to look that up.
But you're right, but you know, that's what happens when you don't stay current, you get way behind.
Sure.
And then it really outches people.
I mean, I, I did have discussions with Baker Tilly about it, and they felt that there wasn't a need for one at this time, but I, I don't, about them doing a full report, you know, I trust their, their knowledge and expertise and background with what they've done for us in the past, rather than spend several thousand dollars in a report that they already told us wasn't needed, just to say we got it. I don't think that's wise, but, yeah, we'll find that out for clarity, and I'll...
I'll go, I've got that rate study at home, too, I'll go back and look at that one more time.
And if, if the council wants, I'd be more than happy to reach out to someone, you know, Baker Tilly, who's done it in the past, so I would encourage them, you know, to continue using them, because they know our system and our numbers already for the most part. I can reach out to them and say, what are their thoughts, and they could maybe just at least issue a letter, say at this time, just a real quick review, maybe at little to no cost, hopefully, make a recommendation to or not to, but, I mean, I, I don't wanna spend any money on it, we don't need to.
Right.
It's only gonna cost them more money, and I don't...
My men, and the last sewer rate, I wasn't here, so I don't know if there's a building in 2% clause or not.
No, there is not.
There's not?
There is, there is not, I read through the sewer ordinance, and there is not.
So, do we want to table these minutes until we get clarity on that, Larry, or what do we wanna do, I know...
I mean, I'm in agree with Larry, he said, no, we need to look at it.
Okay.
That's what he was, what he intended.
What I intended.
Yes, I agree with you, and I think that's one we also discussed.
I wouldn't swear it.
Well, we'll...
Well, I tell you what, let's, let's get clarity for sure.
Okay.
She can go back and listen to the tape recorder, let's just table them, that's why I don't want words put in anybody's mouth that wasn't accurate. So, is there a motion to table the minutes?
Motion to table.
Motion by Larry, second by...
Second.
Mike, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right. Moving on to the approval of accounts payable vouchers, council, any questions regarding those?
And I do have asking for approval on those this evening, and I did go ahead and add the totals on those, and for the utilities for the last month, since last time we did the approval, theirs have totaled a little over five, 507,000, and on the cities, which is the City General Fund, the Trash Fund, all of the other city funds, and all payrolls, and that's a million and 807 in this last timeframe, so...
Motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion by Larry, seconded by Gerald, any further discussion?
Clemens are down there, I think, in front of Mike.
I signed it all...
They're under Mike's folder there, Phil's folder. But all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question carried. Moving on to comments of citizens, is there any citizens that make any comments, come up to microphone, name and address for the minutes? Okay. We'll move on then to department budget requests for 2026, so council, you all should have, yeah, looks like y'all have your binder, if you don't have it, yeah.
And I did have several departments contact me today that were not able to make it tonight, because they had moved things around, because they thought the meeting was gonna be last night.
Yeah, we moved it...
We moved it for some people, and then it never, so...
We tried. That is unfortunate, but if you do have any questions for one of the departments that couldn't make it, feel free to reach out to them, email them, stop by, and, you know, hear what they have to say, or any input they may wanna put towards it as we work on this. Let's see, Connie, where do we really wanna start first, you wanna just...
I don't think we, see, they're meeting next Wednesday evening at, I think it's 5:00.
Yeah.
The council is to, as a workshop on the 2026 budget. So, this evening is just the opportunity for departments to discuss their budgets as to what they have requested for 2026.
And you all should have copied. I know the...
And I can start with my budget, if you would like me to, because I have, did do a few changes in my budget. I do have a deputy that is retiring at the, either the end of January or the middle of February next year, so I will need to bring in someone at that time to work and learn the, either the payroll job or the accounts payable job, I'm not sure yet, it could be that my payroll, my accounts payable deputy may move up to payroll, but so I have put in an additional $3,000 within my budget to cover that position for a month to six weeks, hopefully just a month.
For the end of the year?
For next year.
Next year.
Next year, I put it in for next year. If I see that I do need to hire somebody sooner than the beginning of the year, I'm hoping I would be able to transfer within my budget.
Is that the extra clerical?
Yes, that's the extra clerical position.
But overall, your budget is only up 800 bucks?
Yes, I did reduce my travel for next year, and I think I also reduced the computer support to kinda help cover things and move things around a little bit, so...
I've got a couple of questions, though. Looking at this year, publication of legal notices, didn't they change that, our state legislators changed that?
We still have, as far as I know, we still have to advertise them. Nothing has come down to us that says we have any place else to post them, or anything, that the state is providing us any place else to post them.
They...
Have you heard anything at any of your meetings, Mayor, or have not?
It gets brought up, Adam, several times, when, even when some other legislators are there, and it just, I don't think it falls on deaf ears, I really don't, but I do think it's not been a huge priority, maybe, or if it's not necessarily a priority, it's just a, how do we handle it? And it's just not gotten figured out yet, but I know they talked about a, like a portal that all these would be posted on, and who's gonna be over that portal was kind of the last thing, I think it was the Technology Office, I think, was it gonna be posted, or...
I think so.
It was thrown out there one time, I don't remember if it ever landed anywhere, but that is something that, you know, if it does get changed at some point, we could, you know, just don't spend it.
Correct.
Which is good, but we have to budget for it now, because that's what we, where we're at.
What is this subscription, dues, something, what is that?
That is where, like, the dues for myself, for the clerk treasurer, my dues, and where we pay the same dues out of, and any other departments that have any kind of subscriptions...
ADA is one of them.
Yes, that we pay out of, yes. A lot of things get paid out of my budget that pertain to all departments, like, I provide all the postage for all the departments. That's just not...
But you decreased it at $300?
Yes, I did, I did, I'm trying to do my part.
I know, I'm just...
$300 isn't much right now, but it's a little.
I remember them talking about that legal in session, I thought they did something, but we don't have...
No, it was, it was not even discussed.
Print them fourteen pages in the paper every time. It cost a lot of money to print.
Does?
Connie, can I ask a question about, on page 20? At the bottom of the page, it shows total general of 5511006?
That is the total of the general budget, I apologize, that system runs the pages out different than how the book is.
Okay.
Okay?
Is that, is that the 26th general or the 25?
Yes, 26.
Okay, what, what was the 25, do you have that somewhere?
Probably not off the top of my head.
Okay, okay, but that's the total...
I do not have that with me, I, for last year.
Okay.
Okay, we still wait to discuss any...
Well, you want me to go over mine real quick? If you don't...
One page for us.
Mine's the first page, should be first one, start cutting, right? So, office supplies, we, it was, I reduced it from 1,800 to 900, travel expenses to four, promo expenses down to 1,000, computer support down to 750, dues to 500, office and equipment, we just, we just ended up leaving at zero. The only problem we ran into, and I'm in the office, there's a copier that we use, it's like Barbara Ewing older, I mean, it's been around, but we did receive, I guess, notice or a letter from Hoosier Business that they will no longer offer that as part of the contract special, where you pay by the copy, but they service it and all that. So, if anything goes wrong with it, we either pay out of pocket or buy a new one, and I'm willing to roll the dice, if it goes out and doesn't work anymore, I'll just copy it over in clerk's office or water department and walk over and get it, so, well, it saves some money.
So, if I looked at correctly, your overall budget's down $4,000 from 2025?
Should be at least, and, yeah, I didn't, I didn't add it up, I'm sorry, but yeah, and I'm, I could probably...
It was ADA by 14, and it's now 84714, so...
And my hope is, you know, as office supplies, you know, that was pretty much cut in half, but you can see we've only spent about half of it this year, so that, if we stay on trend with that, then it might work, and we'll figure out and cut some more costs than that even, so...
What is, what is his dues, says 500?
Yeah, they say his dues are 500, no, wait a minute.
Yeah.
What is that?
That's the mayor's association.
Mayor's Association, well...
Yeah, that's fine, I did...
No, that's a good question. It was 750, and if the dues are only 500, why would we budget an extra 250 in there if it's not being spent? I mean, but that, to me, didn't make sense, but that's, that's fine, I guess maybe in case there was a miscellaneous dues or something that would've come in there, but, any questions on that one? Okay. Departments, I don't know which one you wanna start with, I mean, I was looking at Jim, because he's sitting there bursting line in a row, right? You should have a, do you guys, do they have copies of this, Connie?
Yes, they do, they do.
So, you should have a copy...
The street department falls under the Board of Works budget, which starts on page 10. And you, like the mayor said, you do have a copy of his wish list. Some of this was worked into budgets and some of it wasn't, so, but that'll be up to the council as to what you wanna allow.
Well, I can look at, we're in the hole on salt for this year, if this is right.
Yes.
We're fit, $4,500 in the hole.
But we've got salt stored, right?
It's full, the salt dam's full, but we don't have a real bad one, or we're buying it. Okay, plus, we're gonna use that?
Brine maker, or brine...
Yeah, brine maker, okay.
Here's what concerns me, without going into the specifics, the overall budget is up about 20 grand, if I pick it right, from 2025, the total.
Up how much, Larry?
20,000 roughly. However, 50,000 was cut out of the street and alley maintenance, $50,000 we cut out of street and alley maintenance, $50,000 we cut out of street and alley maintenance. I can't remember how much we would've generated through the wheel tax if we would've adopted that for minimum.
The base, the minimum was around 60,000.
Well, that's, that's what I thought, Mr. Gerald.
And we went to max, it was 200 and some thousand.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Also, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Connie, Mayor, but we have no increases pledged to employees, is that correct?
Correct, there are no salary increases, everyone's salary stayed the same from last year, from what they are currently getting in 2025. For health insurance for the employees, for the, for the city's share of health insurance, I should say, the insurance company did recommend an 8% increase, so I did put in an 8% increase on that, and so, one of the other line items that I think I put extra in was, or to reflect everything, was the line item in category three for insurance, which is our workers' comp and our liability in that insurance.
I think you...
Because that is gonna...
If I'm looking at this correctly, utilities are up about 50,000 also.
Correct.
We did a lot of pumping this year?
Yes.
Well, there's a sucker line item for pumping, some, somewhere, I'm not sure where, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
20,000 for pumping, that's the same amount, we might have took this current year, I'm looking. That concerns me, that we have to cut that much out of, out of the street maintenance, but so be it. Let me ask a general question, aside from the no increases for employees, how many hours does a full-time city employee work weekly now?
Street department, park and rec, and that is 40 hours a week. Employees that work within City Hall is 37 and a half.
I think it sounds, right, yes.
You know, your water and your wastewater also is your 40 hours a week, they do not, we do not do budgets on them, but they are included on the salary ordinance once we get to that point.
Okay, so...
Cemetery is 40 hours also.
Okay. So, ever, basically, everybody outside of City Hall is at 40 hours, and City Hall's at 37 and a half?
Well, your police and your dispatchers are different.
I was gonna ask, but I was gonna ask that also.
Yes, yes, yes.
So, what?
Your dispatchers.
How many hours a week?
They average, if they're working their regular schedule, officers and dispatchers average about 42 hours a week. One week is a, a higher week, one week is 46.
46 and the others, 38.
38, because of the 12-hour shifts, how it lines up, so it balances out to be about 42 hours a week on average.
Do they get overtime for that two hours?
Dispatchers, yes, officers, no. And that's because of the classification that they fall under, dispatch, they're considered civilian employees, and they're their officers, and they are exempt from any of the overtime.
Really, I'll just tell you flat out, the reason I asked the question is because we cannot give increases this year, and I'm just throwing it out, okay? Might we consider reducing the working hours, but their pay remains the same, you know what I mean? If they're making $200 a week now, working 37 and a half hours, if we reduce them to 35 hours, they'd still be paying $200, because in fact, it's a little bit of a salary increase, okay? Now, we're reducing the hours that they work, but it's a way to give them more time off. Just a thought. And it gets kinda complicated because of the different classifications of employees, but I think, and this is coming from an old codger, but I think especially younger employees appreciate more time off, paid time off, so I, I just throw that out as something that we might wanna, might wanna consider.
I had to, need a little math figuring on Connie's end and Penny to figure that, I have an idea how I think what you're, I know what you're saying, I think I know how to figure it, but you'd have to, yeah, take a minute.
What, you're saying like comp time, Larry?
No, no, I'm talking about...
Well, you'd have to increase their pay, but reduce their hours they work to make, I don't, you know, I'm, I think it's, I'm thinking, I don't know, I'd have to think about it, I know what you're saying, it's something to write down and throw on the board for consideration. I mean, we even talked about if there's some funding, rather than an, an increase per hour, or by either percent or, or dollar amount, maybe like a stipend of some sort this year, as another option. We just have to wait and see, I tell you, a big part of it's gonna fall down to is dispatch, how much is funded towards dispatch moving forward is going to play a huge role in a lot of this, raises for everybody, or nobody, or stipends, or whatever, it will play a big factor.
I agree.
So...
Well, like, Larry, I can remember when we didn't give any raises, money got tight, and everybody wants the percentage, what, I think this was back under Barbara, or maybe even Gail or Bill, I don't remember. We give across the board 25 cent on our raise, come, after all this was done, and next spring, when we get all our tax money and all that, if money was available, we give them a raise, if it wasn't, we didn't, but if it was available in the spring, we did, then we looked at it again in the fall, and if money was available, we give them a raise. You don't, with this new budget, ah, we just don't know what they're gonna cut that much yet.
I, I understand.
You know?
It's very...
It's very confusing, because we don't know yet.
It's very confusing and it's very complicated, and I haven't had a chance to read Connie's letter, she may answer a lot of the questions.
They may not, are, your big, part of which you're gonna have to see is how the circuit breaker loss affects the city next year. Currently, this year, it was a little over 600,000 that the city lost because of circuit breaker. Right now, in the budget for next year, I'm figuring 800,000 loss.
So, we're below 200, right?
Is what I'm, yes. I had it lower, and I looked at my figures from the state, and I just felt I, because of the unknown, I felt I needed to bump that up. So, yes, if that comes in different, then yes, next year, you may have extra funds to do this increase possibly.
And we really won't know that figure until...
Next spring.
Next spring.
Next spring.
Yeah.
Once the tax bills are all figured and everything, now, so...
It's just, I hear ya, I'm with you, but we don't know. So, anyway, that's the two cents that we did years ago.
We've done that, and it, and a lot of that was that circuit breaker trying to, and, what was the other one, circuit breaker was another one, we were trying to figure out, can't remember it now, but it had an effect.
Made so many different changes and things, so...
And it worked, I mean, and I don't, honestly, I felt like we, or say we, it was, they did, luck out, they had enough money, and they did give those, those raises, but I think it's erring on the side of cautions is a good thing when it comes to things like that, that's for sure. All right, so, let's, I wanna get back onto some of the street real quick, Jim, do you have any comments you wanna make on your budget, any questions for Jim, council, I mean, this is a time of the street, I don't wanna miss that one.
Didn't we, didn't you all paint down there this year, paint something, the old block building? The old block building?
No, we, uh, fixed up the walls that were ate up from the salt storage they used to put in there.
Okay, I thought they talked about painting it up.
Four thousand or something. So we, no, we was going to, but we never did.
Okay.
We didn't get it worked into the budget.
So how big a trailer do you need for equipment? This is your wish list?
Zero turnt mower and some weed eaters, that's not a huge one.
And this time, I have put that in the Q Capital Development budget.
So it's in the Q Capital?
It's in the Q Capital Development.
For the trailer?
For the trailer, I'm sorry, I should have wrote that on here before I gave it to you all, so.
And I look at your budget today on these camera systems, we're about out of money.
That's why they call it the wishlist.
Well, and I did add those-
I know, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, those, the thirty-eight hundred in the request, that includes these additional cameras.
It does?
Yes, yes.
So that twenty-five twenty is equivalent?
Yeah, because-
I thought you did.
But that's a tool you could use to see where your workers are, correct?
And the liability of somebody calling saying they run over my mailbox with a snowplow, you know, or they ran into my car.
These are going the snowplows.
They tore my driveway up, you know?
These are going the snowplows, I guess it's important to mention that.
Yeah.
Because we didn't say that, I, you're not just, yeah.
Because the last time we got the four cameras, two went on city trucks and two went on, are they all-
They're all on trash trucks.
They're all on trash trucks.
That's what else, yeah, where I thought it went.
So setting some time of this wishlist, how many things are not in the current budget request?
The painting of the building and the painting of the break room and bathroom floors, and office and stockroom floors.
So twenty-one thousand? Uh, but what about the doors on the salt?
The doors on the salt bin, I did work into building, repairs of buildings.
Okay.
I did work that into that.
Don't scratch that off.
I'm, I shouldn't. That is, it worked into the 2026.
Budget.
Budget.
So basically, twenty-one thousand requests that aren't already included in the budget.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
Well, like your, your one here, break room, bathroom painting, can we do that in-house? Are we going to try to do that in-house?
No, it was the, uh, the epoxy coating they put on the floors. Because we painted it, and it was a waste of money, you know?
So it's the floors, not the walls?
No, it's the floors. We done painted the walls when I first took over.
Okay.
I had the inmates come and paint, paint all the walls down there.
Okay. All right. We'll see where it comes in.
Okay. Everybody good on street, or move on to? All right, um, I'm just going to go down the lines.
The next budget is the police department budget, if you want, since Derek is here.
Not a problem. All right, Chief?
The police department budgets start from page fifteen.
And by adding, correct, the overall budget's down just under thirteen thousand. Does that sound right?
Larry, I didn't do that, I should have remembered that from last year. You always ask that same question, and I did not do that.
How much was it down?
Thirteen thousand, approximately.
I think you're, you're right, it's right there.
Did that include the training that we did on the Connie, the dog that we showed you about earlier?
Uh, that would have, because, yes, I corrected it.
Yeah.
I just wanted you to be aware of it, yes.
I'm trying to get to page thirteen.
I apologize, Derek, I should have-
The twenty-five budget is one, two eighty-two, two seventy-eight. And the, uh, twenty-six budget is one, two sixty-nine, four fifty-three. So twelve thousand, a hundred and twenty-five dollars less for twenty-six.
We was able to reduce, well, I'll show you some reduction, but you guys can figure it. But like telephones was something we was able to reduce. Promotions was something that was able to be reduced, and duties and subscriptions was some of your big ones, and repairs of equipment was another one. And the dog.
One of the significant items were the builder's desk. So our body armor is on a five-year schedule for expiring. So whenever we first visited the budget this year for, for 2026, we were not slated to have any body armor purchased in 2026. Everybody was current. However, the newest officer that we have, this, this officer, Hansel, that we just hired, he will, he will probably be required, we'll have to purchase some for him in 2026. So that, that would be an addition that we will have on this, since Connie and I had discussed. Those are around twelve hundred dollars for, for body armor for new officers.
And what is your subscription dues, Chief?
Um, so that is just, uh, different things that we, uh, different types of membership for certain, uh, I'm trying to think of one, I'm trying to like-
I don't want to have this blanked out.
Is there a chief's dues?
There was membership dues for like the Chief of Police Association.
Yes.
There's membership dues for the select, which is on a training council, there's different things like that.
And what the council needs to remember is when you're looking at their current, this just takes you through June thirtieth. So there could have been expenses that have been paid since June thirtieth that are not reflected on here.
Right.
Did you put in your budget for a new car?
I actually put in the budget for 2026 on my wishlist, uh, if you don't have two or three, specifically what we try to do each year, then two to the fleet. But the understanding that in 2026, unless something changes, we will be able to trade in a couple as well, post-credit. And I think Connie may have expressed that, right?
The police cars are not in any of the budgets that you will approve, but they are in the wishlist of the items to be paid from the Lowet Public Safety, not Lowet Public Safety, Lowet Economic Development bond that we took out last fall.
Yeah, that was part of that bond that we were going to-
That we did last fall.
Side of that bond that we talked about, so those would be covered out there.
We expected thirty-five thousand dollars budgeted for the two and topos, and that would include the equipment going in. However, uh, the reason why we budgeted that amount was because they told us to expect a six percent increase each year. But whenever we went and picked these two up, they told us that cost is only going up six hundred dollars per car. So that was good news.
That's good news.
Uh, so that, that one thirty-five will probably go to something else, I wouldn't use that whole amount.
And we've already bought two, you said two and a half, but two and a half cars.
We bought two, we bought the pickup.
Well, we, yeah, yeah, out of that too.
I mean, that's a good-
So we bought a lot of veh, police vehicles out of that.
Three vehicles plus the truck this year.
First one.
Connie told me again, we do or do not have two police cars budgeted?
We do.
Somewhere.
I do not have them budgeted anywhere.
Okay.
Because the bond does not have to be appropriated.
Okay.
Okay, so that's nothing that you approve, we just pay out of the bond when we have expenses that can be incurred for that type of bond that we have. So like the two vehicles that he just recently purchased and picked up, those come out of that bond this year. So we're looking at take, possible taking two out of that again next year. Along with some items that I had to move from the Lowet Public Safety bu, the budget because of the bond payments that has to be made from Lowet Public Safety and Economic Development. So I had to move the flock camera, the taser guns, and the body armor.
Yeah.
For next year, out of that.
Chief, what are you, a farm, right, what's your expenses there?
So insurance, uh, facilities out there that get paid, we have internet out there because of our security camera system out there. Um, I know there's the city and, uh, public rec, things like that, they do the maintenance. Uh, there's, there's some maintenance on, uh, we have a recurring expense for our quarter fund that's out there. There's some, that's a monthly expense, our quarter really expense, I think it is. We try to, we have targets that we update occasionally, um, so, you know, just those type things that always come up. The cabin out there is going to need to be, uh, probably created, it's a maintenance down there, it's, it's not good for that.
The county does pay, I don't call it stipend, but a, a amount.
Thirty-four hundred dollars a year.
So that they do help with some of the expenses on it, because they, the sheriff's department uses it as well.
They pay how much, thirty-four hundred?
Yeah, thirty-four hundred, I think, around that. So they do contribute towards that for the sheriff's department and so forth, which, it makes sense, I mean.
They have, I mean, they have full access.
Yeah.
They conduct their training classes there, and they have their arms instructors who will instruct from other agencies and anything. So it's, it's a very nice range for this area, we're very fortunate to have it.
All right, um, Council, any questions before we move on to the next department? Okay.
I have one thing to move.
Sure.
Uh, on, you know, I know there's talk about races and everything, and I don't want to sound selfish, you know, make it sound like my agency's, uh, any more deserving than we guys. You know, we, each year, we try to stay competitive, and that's very important. The, the research that I've done always indicates that that's a good strategy, because if we move to skip years, pitching up is going to cost more money, it's going to be harder to fill, to bridge that gap. So, you know, I try to find ways to get creative, to, to just get a little bit more for our staff each year, just to stay in the ballpark. I think that's very important. Retaining police officers nationwide is a, is a huge deal. Get on social media any day and see agencies offering sign-on notices for officers. One agency I talked to just changed their policy to where officers don't even have to live in the state any longer. They can drive from another state to work there. Uh, that was completely unheard of when I got into law enforcement twenty years ago, twenty-three years ago. So it's, it's, we're fortunate with what we have, we're being treated fairly. I just want to mention that, you know, I think it's something that we always need to be mindful of. I did provide Connie with a spreadsheet, uh, that I think she may have shared with you. But we kind of have an unusual situation at the police department right now, in the sense that we're so young. We have, um, four or five of our officers, our first, second-year officers, uh, that are not receiving any longevity pay. Um, so if there was ever a year to where, you know, increases may not have that big of an impact, it would probably be this year. We're anticipating a retirement of our most senior officer in January, and we've got verbal notification of that. So when that officer retires, we lose the maximum amount of longevity. We no longer be paying that except for, uh, three other of us that have reached that point. But that kind of, that in consideration of how young those officers are, um, you know, just doing the math of what I provided, a two and a half, a two and a half percent increase for our agency is a fifteen thousand, two hundred and six, fifteen thousand, two hundred and six dollar increase from our payroll was last year. That would be the impact of a two and a half percent raise. And then all the way up to a four percent raise, which we're getting up into about thirty-seven thousand. But I even figured that's what a raise would look like if it, if, if three percent went to a first-class patrol officer, our first-level people, and no raises for our senior officers, such as myself. I thought like that that would be something to consider. In doing that, the impact would be about eight thousand dollar difference compared to giving everyone a raise. So I, I just think those are, are for people that would need to keep, are our younger officers. Those of us that are, like me, are too old to go anywhere else, we're not ready to kill them. Nobody wants a twenty-three-year-old cop, or twenty-three-year-old veteran cop. But these young officers, we got to keep, they are our future, we're investing in them every day, we're buying equipment for them, we're sending them to train. So to me, that is, uh, our golden nuggets that we focus on, so.
I agree, and, you know, Ms. Connie, I was working on just some preliminary stuff, we tentatively wrote like two percent, just trying to figure that in, even just, I know it's less what you mentioned, but still, it's something, and a lot of it's going to depend on other funding that, you know, we should be getting, that we may not, we don't know yet, but.
I, I appreciate Councilman Clayton's suggestion about the less work hours, you know, I think that's, uh, creative. That doesn't apply for law enforcement, you know, they're, they're covering twenty-four seven, uh, Christmas, New Year's Eve everywhere.
Yeah.
Kids' birthdays, it doesn't matter, so, um, that's, that's one thing that, you know, we wouldn't be able to be eligible for that type of thing, so.
Well, I think there's, we can get creative on some of this, and, you know, while we don't have it figured in yet, raises for anyone, I'm hopeful that we can figure it in somehow still, I mean.
Can, give me that figure again, Derek, the two and a half percent that you were talking about.
Okay, um, so, and this is with the understanding of our senior officer leaving, okay? He's given the verbal, uh, so a two and a half percent increase, uh, would be a fifteen thousand, two hundred and six dollar increase from our payroll in 2025.
Okay, so that's, that's two and a half percent increase across the board?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, like I said, I would, personally, I think, uh, if that fifteen, fifteen thousand, or that three percent across the board, two and a half, or two and a half across the board would be too difficult. I mean, I, I think, uh, a three percent for our first-class officers would be a good alternative to that. And head out the raises for the supervisors and the chief and assistant chief.
That's how much, eight thousand?
Eight thousand, one hundred and eighteen.
I, uh, actually, um, the, the budget is, the twenty-six budget as listed here is down twelve thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars from the twenty-five budget.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
We have it because, we have it because of our vacancies that we have.
Probably, yes.
We had, uh, we had a couple of officer vacancies this year.
Yes.
And those officers were receiving longevity and things like that. So there was a period of time where we were short-staffed, that would probably account for that difference.
Yeah, but, but the point, the point is, uh, the, it's down twelve, eight, twenty-five, and it would take fifteen, two oh six to implement a two and a half percent increase. I'm talking about a twenty-five hundred dollars, basically, difference from twenty-five.
I'm halfway following you, BS.
Okay. Understanding, it's almost a wash with twenty-five, is what I'm trying to say, you know, with the understanding that the officer retires.
Right.
Right, so, so anyway, I, I think that's something that we should consider, so, anyway, okay.
Chief, any other comments?
Thank you.
This, okay. No, well, thank you. Okay, the next one is pool, right? You just want to talk?
Yes.
Or do you want to wait, just do that parks and recs, and another kind of?
Well, you just want to do those together.
You want to do pool and, and parks and recs? So we'll start with this pool, that's nineteen, and then we'll, then, then we'll go into twenty-nine after that, we'll, Steve's here, he has a list, I don't know if you've seen it yet.
It's not right, my pool, but, though.
Park and rec. We're starting with pool first. Oh, you want about, well, parks and rec wishlist is still pull stuff in there, I think, yeah. So it's not, uh, he combined, kind of, we are, so.
But I need to make a correction to your page. On page twenty, under personal services. But I need to make a correction to your page, on page twenty, under personal services. Several of us have checked over this, and we all missed this. There needs to be a line item in there that says pool manager for eleven thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Does he have the pool salary corrected in there? Do you got that, forty-five hundred?
Yes, that's for the lifeguards and the managers of the...
Forty-five, yeah.
Yes. But there needs to be a pool manager there.
For eleven thousand?
Eleven thousand, seven hundred. And, there's some explaining. I don't know if Steve wants me to explain what, what we've got going there. We're looking, what is being requested for next year is the assistant that he currently has that's working twenty-nine hours a week now, to make her a full-time position next year, where during the pool season, she will be managing the pool, and then during the, and other times, she'll be working and is in the park and rec budget. And then her third part of her salary will come from the concession stand fund, because she will also be managing the concession stand at the sports complex. So, if we take her salary and divide it by three, this is what it comes out to. So, we just divided it into those three categories, into those three budgets.
On page thirty-one, you have pool manager. Eleven, seven.
On page thirty-one, you have the park and recs.
I apologize, guys. It's in there, but something's not...
It's got wrong, in the wrong...
It's in the wrong cap, in the wrong one.
Should be the pool, right?
It should be in the pool. So, that doesn't mess the overall total up.
That's good, I was worried about that.
It's just in the wrong budget here.
Yeah.
I will get that corrected. I don't know why that did that.
Both the pool and the clerical go in?
Pool manager is eleven thousand, seven hundred. It should be in the pool budget on page twenty.
Okay.
Clerical stays where it's at, because it's split between three.
Yes.
The parks, rec, pool, and concession, to get her totals. Did I explain that right?
You're putting in there just for...
Is your...
Yeah.
So, you're telling me that the personal services for the pool, forty-five thousand dollars, does not include the manager?
Correct. Correct.
So, eleven thousand, seven hundred needs to be added?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Without that, the pool budget is going to be down about ninety-four hundred dollars. So, now, it's a couple thousand, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
In your proposed budget?
On page thirty-one for park and rec?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay. Field and maintenance sports complex workers, is that the weekend deal, or that? So, we're going to do it through the week, and put on weekend...
Returning people are someone.
The people leasing or using our fields will pay toward that?
Well, what they pay for their leasing goes towards that.
Correct.
Like, if they, they rent a field for X number of dollars, that money that comes in goes to pay for...
Goes to pay for...
That employee, but through us.
It takes more than one, I'm sure.
Well, yeah.
This is based on two in...
Yeah. The, before, it was done a little differently, but this is, they will be our employees, and when they're not doing the fields, line, there'll be bathrooms, or probably maybe even still helping in the concession stand, if that's at that point. Who knows? Their main part is the fields, restrooms, and cleaning, but, yeah.
Okay. I mean, there's just so many variables there, we don't know yet.
We talked about the salaries for them two months ago, maybe three, about what we was going to pay them.
About three months ago.
Yeah.
I mean, we still got a lot of bugs to work out those turny things yet, to make it work smoothly.
Yeah, and it...
Next year's going to be an interesting year for the sports complex.
I think it's going to go well. I really do, because, you know, it, everything did work out pretty good here, you know, kind of, not say halfway through the season, but in some ways it was. But, where we, it gave us time, but all of us as council members even helped volunteer in there and work, and Connie and all of us, and learn what we expected employees to do. Good learning, correct? Derek was in there working. It was all in there. But, it was a good team effort, and I think everyone threw their time on that.
I think in the weekend, of course, you can't go by weekend. You were down there, you rang every weekend we had a turn.
Right. One of the two days or something.
Bring in six to eight thousand a weekend. That's the profit.
Well, that's the gross, but...
Yeah.
Gross, but yeah.
Gross. So, it's, I think once we have a good weekend from start to finish, that profit, gross, will be more. It'll be well worth. And, it's not just for us, it's going to be for the economy. I text Derek from the courthouse, hey, we're ready to lay, be prepared, or, you know, the weekend. I let him know we're stocked up with their, with their food. This is when the term is happening, or whatever.
I think what's the lease payment for a mower?
That is one of the mowers that the park and rec has, and that was a lease, that was a five-year lease on a mower. And, we have two-year, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and part of, and then there's a partial payment in twenty-eight to make on that yet.
Is that one in, but zero returns?
Yes.
I think that would be, the diesel, I think, I'm not sure.
It was one of the big bat wing...
We still have one of those?
Oh, yeah. That's pretty much what they have to have to efficiently get the fields mode and the practice.
So, I'm looking at this right, the park and rec budget on page thirty-two, the total for twenty-six is up approximately ten thousand dollars over the twenty-five budget. Does that sound right, Connie?
Well, we'll take out that eleven thousand, seven hundred and five out of that.
While I did that, initially, I had it at fields over.
Because I've got it in there twice in that budget.
Yeah.
And that could be, because we did, league support was, was dropped from what it currently is, and league director, we no longer are putting anything in there for that for next year. And, some of the park improvements and that, we, park, general maintenance and repair and park improvements, I think maybe we did cut back on those a little bit, too.
And then you've got the...
But then we did add a line item for repair and maintenance of the sports complex, just in case something comes up that, that needs to be taken care of.
Right, right. Okay. Without getting too much into the weeds, can you explain to me what page thirty is?
Page thirty, you need to please put an X through that, okay? That is, that is, that is a line that the state allows us to have unappropriated funds, that we can pay different things out of that are not appropriated. And, please, just, I will, just, that just needs to be removed from your book. I apologize.
That explains it.
I was rushing to get these done, and I forgot to pull that out, so.
Okay. So, Steve, your wish list here, these are things that aren't included in the budget, is that correct?
One thing on his wish list is included in the Q cap budget, and that was the, oh my gosh, which was it now? The bathrooms at, well, he's got it marked here as pickleball court, but I put it in the Q cap budget as Haggan Aron Park, because it's down there and around the tennis courts and pickleball courts and all of that. And, he doesn't have an amount here, but when we discussed his budget, it was like, I put in forty-five thousand, five hundred.
But, one thing Steve and I had talked about last week or this week, you know, redoing the tennis courts, pickleball courts, we may combine some of that as a sponsor or something that might want to contribute towards that, and that may help reduce that forty to go somewhere else. But, we're looking at those options.
You got redo basketball court. That's Joe Schaefer Park?
Joe Schaefer.
That's out there, correct?
Yes.
We just didn't, when we put the playground out, we didn't do anything with that?
We've replaced some, we replaced some backstops or nets on it.
The backboards, I think, are new.
Something's new.
Yeah, but we didn't do anything with the, the court itself, like paint the lines or...
The surface.
Surface those.
There's trees that are right by the porch, and the roots are...
Okay, changing from chlorine to saltwater, how much you think has lost status?
You could actually do at least, the, or the generators for the pump the salts out. You could either lease that on a so-called year term, or you could buy it, I think it was like a hundred and eighty-something thousand. So, we're, they're looking into those terms, or we are. But, the overall savings is you dump salt in a lot less than what you do with the chlorine and acid. So, it's, that's where your cost savings is, and a lot does wear on your equipment. Like, our corinator is like, it's wore out. It needs replaced. We actually replaced all the enters this past year. So, it's good now, but there's still some parts that need to be replaced, like the chlorine has just...
Will the salt corrode like chlorine?
It does, but it, the salts don't wear as fast as the chlorine does.
Salt, that's like my salt system. I got it, it don't wear as fast as chlorine does.
Ryan's going to come down and help run that for you this year.
Yeah. I've learned a lot from that stuff. I know that.
I know nothing about the chemical side pools.
It's, it's a lot of fun.
You've got drain, that's a splash pad.
The, between the splash pad and the pool, it builds up like a mold, and it becomes really slippery. So, a lot of kids will be running through there, and they slip and fall. So, if we put a drain between there, it will drain out to the, the drain outside the pool.
So, this is located where inside, inside the pool?
Yeah, there's a fence that went between...
Between the fence, between the pool and the splash pad.
It's like an algae can kind of conform there if it's, you know, it's been on our radar to do. It's just kind of a wish list.
Yeah.
It's something that can be, you know, as long as every day they go and sweep it and clean it, you can prevent that from growing there. But, I think, I don't think it's high on his list, on speaking.
I bought a seven hundred dollar cleaner to hopefully take care of it. I want to see how well it works. It's actually four liners, and I bought it to help clean the liners this year also. So, I'm going to test it out there also.
And you've got Bitoral machine for the sports complex. Is that a big mower?
It's a, it's a, it self-levels the dirt. It keeps, it's got a laser to help level the dirt.
For the infield?
For the infield, I believe.
Okay.
It's not a high-priority machine. It just...
He just gave this his wish list.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
But it'd be nice, absolutely, it'd help with keeping the dirt where it needs to stay, but...
So, we're pool and parks and rec, we're kind of go over both of them. Any other questions for Steve? Steve, do you have any things you want to add that's not on your list, or you're thinking about, or... Council, you ready to go on to street? No, cemetery?
I thought we seen in the budget, you had a, I don't have to find it, certification, chlorine certification, or chemical...
Chlor certification, that's in the pool budget, yes.
Yeah, I seen about four pages on it.
It's on page twenty.
Twenty, I need to go back four minutes. Yeah, pool chemical certification. So, if we go to salt, we still have to do that?
Yes.
Okay. Never part would be the pool manager?
Pool manager, yeah.
Okay.
You guys ready for twenty, page twenty-one, cemetery now?
Yep.
Go on to bathroom. Alvy couldn't be here this evening, so if you have questions, you can reach out to him. His is a fairly, not asking for much, so, that's, that's good. He is asking for a mower. It's, replace one, and they're going to trade one in. I don't, I'm looking at that price, Connie, but I thought the one he gave me had a trade-in price on it, but I don't...
It does not. He did explain to me that on the phone, that it does not have a trade-in price on it, because the gentleman has not had, come out and looked at the mower that he is wanting to trade in. So, it would be less than this, and, oh, wait, this does have a discount for the city, the municipality discount on it already. But, yes, it does not have the trade-in.
The mower he's wanting to trade in, we bought that back in twenty twenty or twenty-twenty-one. I don't, I didn't bring that folder with me. But, he feels...
Twenty twenty-one, yes.
He feels, well, that one is, does work, and it's good. And, it's not that he doesn't like it and can't use it, but he feels this is a safer than the other one, as far as usage goes.
But currently, I have not put that in any budgets for next year.
And that never would go down, because if a trade-in, whatever that may be, I don't, I don't know what that would be. I should have brought that folder with me, what we paid for it, and figure half or so, maybe. I don't know what...
Yeah, I don't know.
How many hours are on it and the condition overall, but I would figure you can knock four thousand off probably, maybe for trade-in, or three, I don't know.
The cemetery budget, the total budget's actually down about six grand. But, but, I've got a question on this year's budget.
Okay.
We currently have thirty thousand budget for repair of the old Suxton building.
Yes.
What's the status of that?
I'm still trying to get some numbers together. I, I've been covered up getting...
Why, why do we need it?
Well, it cares, there's...
Is that the building in the circle there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. It, the option we could do with it is these colibariums, we have six or seven left.
Nine.
Nine. And, we're going to have to either purchase additional colibariums, which is where the ashes go, it's not the actual coffin. We're going to have to purchase an additional unit of that, and, Connie, was it forty-eight thousand for that colibarium he, first one he got us, with how many niches in it?
Oh, gosh.
I mean, look, I think I have it, but...
I did bring it up here, hang on, just a second.
There's options, we could either buy those granite ones for forty-eight thousand, or one or two, or whatever, and see how many numbers they are. Or, we could use this building as a colibarium and put these cases inside there, where they're not like granite, they're more like a wooden with a glass front on them type thing. It might be cheaper to do it that way than actually buy the other ones. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to weigh it, so I haven't had time to figure it out. I'm close.
I apologize, Chris. I thought I brought that up here wrong.
I think I did.
I did not.
But I got it.
I don't know if I ever made you a copy of it.
You either did, or you told me, but I don't remember.
I told you, but I don't know if I made you a copy.
Clarify. We can transfer in these, in a year, let's say it's December.
Yes.
We can transfer some of this money here, right? I'll just stay in that category.
As long as I keep it with, as long as it keep, stays within the cemetery budget.
Okay.
Yes. Because as, as you can see, his ground maintenance is in red.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, so...
So, we could use that money to buy more this year instead of...
You could. That's what I'm thinking. Or, we could use that money to, there's no money in the budget for that pay. in the budget for that paving of that road between the, whatever you wanna call that round building, the street is shot.
I don't have that with me, I'm sorry, council, I thought I had it too.
Me neither. When we built those, when Ron Crawford Corporation built those...
The colibariums?
The col, the whole thing out there, they started it, and we'd sell one, we'd move on, we'd move on, if we build one to match it, we can get our money back by selling them.
You make a lot of money, somewhat a lot, but you can, you can make your money back and then some.
Right.
That was Gov. Room, the head on...
Oh, yes, it was all planned out years ago.
Oh, here it is.
Yes.
It was...
We don't have to discuss that building today, but...
But it's, for eighty of those colibarium crypts, it's about fifty thousand.
That, that's currently the ones we have, they're just on one side.
Yeah.
Right.
And this, they give us prices on one side or on both sides.
We can discuss that, I don't want to get into that debate tonight.
No, well, it's whichever, but...
But sometime, we'll have to debate that.
There is some things we, we need to do, and, yeah, okay. Any questions on, on that? The next one is fire, so it's page twenty-three.
He's in the red on his repair equipment.
Well, not really.
Just because I have not done a transfer yet to transfer that.
Okay.
And he is aware of that.
So we did, the reduction, the reductions were made in operating supplies, was reduced by four hundred dollars, travel expenses reduced, telephone reduced, and training was reduced a little bit. We've got some options on telephone, Connie and I and Anjan have been exploring that we could have time to get some of these things together, we might save tens of thousands of dollars on phone, but we just, it's, it's a, gotta get the budget stuff done first, so, because the phones aren't cheap, as you all know, that's, I think we have too much in them, but...
I don't know, we, we don't have a phone in the firehouse anymore, do we?
Hmm, you do, but it can be, there's a device out there you can get that you can actually keep the same number, and the phone would actually just go over the internet, and there's an internet there, so then you buy this device one time, you keep your number, and the device is like eighty bucks, and you don't pay anymore, and you keep your number, and it goes through the internet, so I mean, that would save us, moving forward, it would save a significant amount of money, not just there, but as we look at other departments doing the same thing, you wouldn't know any different.
What are you talking about?
Phones, under fire budget, under category three, it was four hundred, reduced it to two hundred.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, no, I was, you, you weren't hearing me, I was going further beside fire, I was taking it other places too, that it could save money. Yeah, I know it's two hundred there.
Yeah, the, the overall, the total budget's down a thousand dollars.
So any questions on fire, Greg, or Chief Lenny didn't have any specific things that I remember him saying, do you?
Where's our chief?
He had an appointment tonight, he couldn't be here, he was one that could have been here yesterday, it, it's unfortunate, so, the next one, this animal shelter, so page twenty-five, now, little history on that, you might remember last year...
And that, we are gonna be discussing that later, or on the agenda also for this year's budget.
This year they're requesting fifty-five thousand, last year they requested fifty, but the council initially only approved thirty-six, does that sound right Connie, or thirty-eight?
That's correct.
Thirty-six?
Thirty-six for this year.
Or thirty-five?
Thirty-six, over nine months.
Okay, well, that, if one letter's set, okay.
They, they didn't go with...
What's the one I have, but, oh, thirty-five was the year before.
Four.
Sorry.
Possibly.
Thirty-six this year, okay, sorry, I was off a thousand, but, and we're about to talk about that, it's still on the agenda for later, but, so I guess, I guess you say technically, it was an increase of five thousand requested from a year before, but you only approved thirty-six, so, it depends on what the council does later, if that's true, the fifty or whatever, and Molly's here, no? Molly, okay, you look different, your hair looks great, I can't, I have my glasses on, sorry, Molly's here, if you have any questions, she'd be happy to answer anything on her, she did provide a little bit of a budget, you guys have a copy of that in your folder too?
Yes, we should.
In a letter.
In a letter, so I just wanted to make sure you, you see that, I don't think I had to go into a big spiel how important a shelter is to the community, and they do a lot, they do a lot of stuff I wouldn't want to do every day, I love animals, but still, it's a lot, so...
The bottom line of this, if we approve fifty-five thousand, that's a big if for management, I'll just tell you, tell city residents what you're paying a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars towards the support of the animal shelter.
Hundred and fifteen?
Yeah, because the county pays sixty thousand, and tell city residents pay county taxes.
Okay.
Tell city residents would be paying a hundred and fifteen thousand, combined county and city contributions.
Is that what the county, excuse me, this, is that what the county, what they proposed for next year, do you know?
No, I don't know.
We just had a long discussion, a week or two ago, about the wheel tax, and county folks putting, and tell city residents paying both county and city, and all that sort of stuff, so that's a big concern on why. It's a county responsibility.
I don't disagree with that.
I mean, I, the statement is valid, but I look at it as, and I don't have much of a dog in this fight really, the council approves this, but I look at it as a donation to River's Edge for services. If you want, I look at, I mean, I know what you're saying, I get it, it's still paying for that service, but it's not, to me, it's no different than me personally donating to the shelter, but in the case of the city, it's to help support it, but you guys do what you have to do, I mean, I think you kind of have an idea how I think about it, but, yeah. Do you guys want to mark that something for now, I don't want to, just can't leave a blank?
We'll discuss it here in a minute.
Mark can be discussed next Wednesday evening, when they go through all the budgets, if you want. Whichever way they want.
Where's these on here, isn't it?
Yes, we're going to discuss the twenty twenty-five.
If all else fails, I would, you could always continue to budget what you did last year with the same stipulations, if you choose to do that, and then give that additional money at this time, maybe you're gonna consider that the next, on the item on the agenda here soon, and still get them at fifty, but it's still trying to do something, I hope that makes sense, so, all right, you want to move on, or you want to stay on that, I mean, I'm just trying to keep us on something.
I'm ready to move on unless somebody else's got a question.
Load in the zoning, twenty-seven.
We reduced a few things out of his budget.
Yeah, demolition and stuff, that's at a board of work, right, budget, ain't it? Okay.
Yeah, you eliminated the per diem for the board members.
Yes, let's talk about that.
It's not, it's not thirty-seven fifty, I think the true figure is twenty-two fifty, I believe, something like that.
Okay, so what Larry's talking about is per diem for board members, so currently, if you serve on the plan commission, I think Larry does, and do you Brian, you're also on there, okay, Larry and Brian currently serve on it, as well as several others, they receive a...
There's a total of nine members.
Total of nine members, they receive a payment of two hundred and fifty dollars a year, whether they attend one meeting, or twelve meetings, or fifty meetings in a year, there's been talk of paying per meeting they would attend amount, if they only have one meeting a year, and you do a certain number, twenty bucks, that's all they'd get, or you just pay the two fifty for the year and be done with it, or remove it altogether. Now, and that research state statute, what we can and can't do, but I mean, to my knowledge, other than two board of works members, that, only, only one gets it, I guess, board of works, there is no other board members that we have that get paid, right, that's on the city budget?
I think so.
I mean, I know the council and all that kind of stuff, and I'm talking about like a volunteer type board, which, these are volunteers.
The parks board does not.
Yeah, the parks board does not, the EDC used to, and they removed that ten years ago, I bet.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't aware of that.
It's, it's been some time, they actually receive quite, I don't know, maybe it's the same amount, they say look for cuts, I was looking for cuts, and I thought, well, I'll, I'm trying, you know, again, this is your all's budget, do what I can, and if you guys disagree, that's not gonna hurt my feelings, you gotta make your decisions. Office supplies was reduced a thousand bucks, because he's not used that much of it, he's trying to cut back on that too, so, does the council agree with that idea, or think it's a bad idea?
I don't have an issue with removing it.
Yeah, I don't either, and I'm on, I'm on there, but it doesn't matter.
Well, I know it's only two hundred and fifty dollars, and that's not a lot, but I'm trying.
We gotta cut somewhere.
They say cut the fluff, I'm, there's some fluff, I call it, so...
Two thousand two hundred and fifty.
Yeah, I mean, I'd rather see that money for that go to something else that we need, you know, maybe raises for the police department, maybe raises for this, or something buys that more, or funds the shelter than that, I mean, I don't think anybody serving that board's on there for the two hundred and fifty dollars, no, I think they're on there because they want to be, they care about things, and...
The lost sixty thousand keeps coming to mind, I just, I don't sleep over that.
What's a cellphone usage, is that, when he's out, when...
We reimburse him for his cellphone because he uses it for his job when he's out on sites and, and that, so he does get reimbursed for it.
Is that for him and his employees, or just his?
That is just him, that's for his personal cellphone.
Like we do to police, cause, while he's gone, because if they have to go to court, then we pull those records?
They, we have gone to a new system for the police, and they will, they, the individual officers no longer will be paid for the use of their personal cellphones, they are, they are on a system now, I don't even know which who it's through.
Verizon, they have their own, they have their, they have their own phones, that they're city issued phones, it's a city, we own the phone, that's for their, to use for their police work business, and not their personal, so if for some reason, if their device would be, I don't know, it's not summons, what do you call that?
Get summons.
Summons, that's a word, okay, by a court, they wouldn't take their personal phone, if that's even, I don't know how they can and can't do stuff, but it's, it's not mixing personal and that together, and we're, and it's, I don't think it's really costing this hardly anymore, if...
It's costing, if it's, it's not much more, and it may be less, I'd have to look.
It's a safety barrier for our officers, with their phones and stuff, so, I know they have to carry two phones, but as much as they use theirs, and their, their personal cellphone numbers don't get out there as much, which could be a problem. Do you have any questions on building and zoning budget, before we move on to the next item? All right, dispatch, thirty-three, I, we can talk about it, there's not, that's gonna be a discussion for tomorrow, we have a meeting, a joint meeting at the Perry County Courthouse, or Perry County, the NX, the old armory, at five o'clock.
But we're just discussing the twenty-five budget.
Correct, which won't be a whole lot different than the twenty-six, in essence, I mean, with some things, but not a crazy amount, health insurance, you know, Connie told you what we'd change in her for that, and then some of these salaries, but not a whole lot of difference.
I noticed about the administration fees.
For now, yeah.
So the overall dispatch budget compared to twenty-five is down a little, twenty-four thousand dollars.
With the bulk of that being that administration fee?
All without being the administration fee.
Okay, any questions on dispatch?
Yeah, legally dispatch is a county responsibility, is it not?
It's my understanding, yes. I mean, that's, the money that the city is putting into funding that, especially this year so far, is a significant amount of money that is, is hindering us from growth and things that we need to be doing as well, for our own community, it is a hinder on our budget for next year, had, if, if we weren't paying towards dispatch in the twenty-six budget at all, we wouldn't have to cut our budget, we'd actually not, I almost say have a surplus, that's not the word I want, but we would actually have another two hundred, three hundred, that we could do something with.
Correct.
Which would mean, it would fund raises for our employees, it would fund raises for the police department, it would fund maybe that mower, it may fund animal shelter, you know, that we wouldn't have to, it could fund a lot of things that we may, so that's, it's really critical that we work with the county somehow to come to some type of terms agreement, to finally put that to rest, and I'm confident, hopefully tomorrow, we'll have an answer for the twenty-five, and then it won't change hopefully a lot from the twenty-six, but...
Or, or perhaps we give them notice, and we'll give them a fair amount of time, but we just transfer the dispatch service to the county, say twenty-six is their last year, guys, twenty-seven, you take it over.
I don't have the answer for all that, but I'm hoping, I'm, I gave a proposal to the county, and it's, you know, it's not my responsibility to come up with the budget for the, what the county contributes, and everybody contributes, but it's something I'm trying to stand an olive branch the best I can to help, I may not agree with that, but, you know, I'm doing something. All right, so any other question on dispatch, you know, it's, do we want to go through Q cap development, all those tonight, or we want to wait for those, because mostly we was looking at a lot of department heads.
Aye. Page thirty-seven.
Should say Q cap development.
Instead of dispatch.
Instead of dispatch, yes.
That's what I thought.
I, I was doing this, and I, I was pressuring my deputies to get this all done for me, and so...
She's done a few things like that.
So that I could get it to you guys, so I apologize.
To see if you catch it, you know?
Yeah, that's, yes, I did, yeah, that's why we did it.
She's testing you guys.
Rather than going to orders, or anything that you'd like us to jump to?
Not really, a lot of this I have explained to you in the letter that I have provided to you, most of these back here do not have salaries in them, a few of them do, like the new concession stand fund, that is a totally new fund on page seventy, that, you know, we're looking at hiring new positions in that.
Yeah, a hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
And, so I really, this evening, I know, there's no other departments here to go over any of the budgets, I think we've, we've addressed Steve's, and we've addressed Jim's, and we had addressed Derek's, unless you all have some questions for their back end here?
I, I've got just a couple more questions, Connie.
Okay.
Page forty-three. Motor vehicle highway company.
Okay.
We reduced the street alley maintenance by thirty thousand dollars.
Yes, I did, because of the salaries that are in there, and just in order to get that budget to balance, I needed to do that, now, you know, if we, currently, we haven't spent that hundred and fifty thousand, so if we do not spend any of that this year, that cash will carry over to next year, so there's the possibility you could do additional appropriation next year, and increase that back up to that hundred and fifty.
Possibility.
Possibility, yes.
So, calculating right, I can't remember the other budget, I think it was the street department, but when the street department, reducing street alley maintenance by fifty thousand, and then reducing it in this budget by thirty thousand, we cut eight thousand out of the street alley maintenance funds from twenty-five to twenty-six.
Yes.
And I hope, like you, I hope.
I hope things are gonna be better than what I'm anticipating, so.
The... EDC budget is down about twenty thousand. Overall, it's down about fifteen thousand, it's down twenty thousand in the personal services, sort of reason for that, we're looking.
Title, maybe?
Is that the one where you pay out differently, or is that, I think it's...
Page forty-seven versus page forty-six.
I thought there was something with the payout on that, that wasn't right.
Oh, Larry, let me check on that. See, I should hire Larry in my office after I do budgets, and let him look over, let me look into that, Larry, that, I can look at that right now and tell you that's not correct.
Okay.
Cause those salaries should have all stayed the same, benefits probably should have gone up. Oh, I see the problem right away, I will get you a new page on that one, I, I see what I did.
Okay.
So, that's what they were making in twenty fifteen.
In twenty fifteen?
Yeah, I, yeah, just, don't ask. I've had some long evenings doing this stuff, so.
And, and I apologize for asking all the questions.
No, I'm glad you did, cause I just hadn't noticed that at all.
A general question, what, what can, I'll come back on page fifty-two now, what can riverboat funds be used for? What are the limitations on riverboat funds?
Despite any...
There are none, there, it's for any, it's for any other expense that the city has, that's not budgeted, yeah, it can be used for anything.
For fixing alleys, or paving streets, or?
Yeah.
I would think so.
Then, I really question, I mean, if we're in a cutback mode, Mayor, which we seem to be, looking for every dollar that we can save, I really question whether we should be spending, and, and they do a great job, and, and people are watching, I'll probably get criticized for this, but I don't care, I've been through these budgets, I've spent several hours today going through these figures, and we're facing the year with our employees not getting an increase, but I question whether we should be spending three thousand dollars on regional arts, three thousand dollars with Tell City Strong, I'm sorry, Mike, and a thousand dollars on the historical society, that's seven, seven thousand dollars that we're spending on those three groups.
We actually reduced the museum one down from three to two, to one.
I know, Chris, I understand, I, I saw...
So, I mean, and I'm fine removing, removing the museum altogether, I mean, ain't gonna hurt my feelings any. I mean, it might hurt others, but I mean, they'll be mad at me, too, but...
What, can you repeat that?
What?
What you just said.
Well, removing, removing it?
From where?
Historical society?
Historical society.
Yeah, cutting them down to zero? I'm a member of it.
Cut them to two thousand.
I cut them, too.
But I've had a few, speaking years back, said we need to help them because there's so much data there, and so much history there.
That's why I cut it two thousand to a thousand, so...
I know that.
Yeah.
And I don't disagree with Larry, what he's saying, but, you know, somewhere down the road, if we have to make more cuts, we have to look at regional arts, Tell City Strong, Historical Society.
I agree.
We have to look at that.
And I'd rather spend that money on putting handicap access, cutting the curves up there, okay? If we're, if we're gonna spend seven thousand dollars, let's do it making that handicap accessible, those curve cuts.
I mean, I understand I could cut...
If you go through the budget, you'll see that there's money in the budget for that this year, we haven't spent.
Did the half pot, some of the half pot go to the Historical Society?
I have no idea.
It, it, it will.
It will?
A portion of it will go to the Historical Society, the Tell City Regional Arts, and Perry County Council on H.
And it wasn't back when you were talking about, no, so they have that added income?
Yeah.
I don't know how much it is, but...
Yeah, I mean, I just said, people said, we need to, some people said, you know, I'd really see you spend money on historical, and then the others is what they've told me in the past. It's more important, because that's, there's a lot of knowledge up there in that building.
But what about taking care of our dogs and cats?
I understand that. I'm just telling you what people told me, I'm like you, you'll probably get blasted, and I don't care, we have to make this budget work, one way or the other, and if we have to go back and make cuts, we have to look at everything.
And that's why I look at...
It's one of those things, we don't know, because of this Senate Bill One, we don't know what's gonna happen. I hope the people listening can remember to call their state legislators, just like this will tax, say, fix it. But I don't think they will, I don't think they'll fix it.
I can try.
I, I'd give you an A-plus for trying.
Thank you.
I remember back in the fifties, when we traveled from Plasford, New York, to San Diego, in one week, to visit my grandparents, all along the highway, your tax dollars are worth. I didn't realize, you know, I was just a kid, but now we have interstate highways. I think we need to post, I mean, the people don't appreciate, they think we're just squandering the money, I think. Every time we do something out on the highway, out on our roads, we ought to have a sign up there, your tax dollars are worth. Let them see every single project, no matter what it is, so they know that it's not just us squandering it, like...
Well, if you go out in the county, you'll see a lot of signs, you know, this road funded by CED, I have tax or something.
Edit tax.
Yeah, edit tax. I mean, that's okay, I, I know where the money goes, you know where it goes, but the John Q public doesn't understand that. I mean, we have, I wish we could rub the crystal ball and see how much we're gonna lose, if we can, we don't know. Now, I think at this time next year, we'll have a better feel of what's gonna happen, unless they change it again next year.
It might happen.
Well, sure it could happen, even though they're sitting on a two billion dollar plus budget surplus. Anyway, that's okay.
Anything else on the budget before we move on to committee and ward reports?
I have one other question on page sixty-two, Connie, and this is just a question. I noticed, I assume it has something to do with timing, but I noticed in twenty-five, we had three hundred and seventy-five thousand budgeted, and in twenty-six, you've got three hundred thousand budgeted.
Yes, because, Larry, I'm tired, okay, no, I can explain, hang on, hang on. Because of the low public safety budget, with everything that's in there, that is all that we can afford to do to make that payment, okay?
Okay, got it.
Look, I let my wheels turn for a little bit there.
Okay, that's fine, I'm just trying to keep you on your toes.
Somebody has to.
I am, that's why I get paid the big bucks for it.
That's right.
And we can talk about this later, when we get into actually adopting budgets, but this concession stand on page seventy, for sports complex. Hundred and twelve thousand dollars budgeted.
I can provide you, and I did not, I can provide you with what we're estimating the income to be...
All I need to know is, will it be more than a hundred and twelve thousand?
Yes, yes, we're show, I'm showing a quite considerable operating balance in that fund.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Somebody will put that in writing?
Yes.
Get the mayor to sign it, right?
Connie and I'll be out there cooking hamburgers again.
I'll be out there working.
We're going to have a break, ain't we, Mike, if we do it again?
It was, it was, it was good times, it really was.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I, that's it for tonight, thanks.
All right. So, we'll move on now to the committee and ward reports, so we'll start first with Larry Clinton, Ward One, and your partners in pride, please.
Okay. Do you want a ward report, or just a partners in pride?
Well, both, committee ward report, then also your partners in pride.
Okay.
Just a reminder, don't forget it, it's about to start.
On a ward report, on August the eighth, I participated in the, or attended the christening and dedication ceremony of the flatboat Abraham, that's being sponsored mainly by Katie, bought all the barrels there to actually christen the boat, and there was a good crowd there.
It was warm, but it was good crowd.
It was warm, there was a good crowd. I attended on August the eleventh, the revolving loan fund board meeting, that was the first one for me to attend since I've been appointed to that board. On August the twelfth, I attended the Perry County Development Corporation meeting, and somewhere, where do I have those? One little mic, pass it down. I, I'm not gonna read this, but this is a, I'll just highlight a couple things, this is a twenty twenty-four report, an impact snapshot of the services that were provided by Perry County Development Corporation during twenty twenty-four, and showing how many employers they worked with, the job opportunities, community events, there, they do a lot of the Perry promotions, there were thirteen and a half million impressions generated through that Perry promotion site. One of the things is on the front page here, is the Make My Move relocation incentive program, that's a real active program, they've done a great job with that, there have been eighteen new households, forty new residents that have moved into Perry County through this program, and it shows the average income and the economic output of those, those families. Perry County was named one of America's most welcoming places during twenty twenty-four, thanks in part to their Make My Move relocation program, and I found this very interesting, fifty-seven percent, over half of the movers, had no prior connection to Perry County, so these were people that had never heard of Perry County before, had no connections to Perry County. So, we were told the other evening, yeah, one of our meetings, that people were fleeing Tell City and Perry County, well, this gives a different picture of the man. On the backside, the Ruddy program, which P C D C is involved in, round one, they secured over two point seven million dollars of Ruddy funds for Perry County, much of that went into the sports complex, the Hoosier Heights subdivision that's being developed, and then, in round two, which those funds haven't been released yet, but there's been one point one million approved, I don't think those funds have been released yet, so. One disturbing thing that was reported during our meeting, I found very disturbing, is there was a report that was presented, this is from twenty twenty-three, kindergarten retention rates, the percentage of kids being retained in kindergarten. Perry County was one of the ten highest counties in the state of Indiana, having kids retained in kindergarten. It was eleven point seven six percent, that's thirty kids, I mean, but percentage-wise, that's not a good figure, we're doing something wrong to have twelve percent of our kids retained in kindergarten, so...
Coming not prepared for kindergarten.
Absolutely, absolutely, programs such as Head Start, preschool, et cetera. On August the twenty-first, I attended a plan commission meeting, as well with Brian, where we met with the hotel developer, who was present, and told us that the eighty-room hotel should be under construction, hopefully yet this year, with completion by January of twenty twenty-seven, so we'll see if that comes to pass. We've been told many times that it's gonna be under construction, but we got a special meeting with Mr. Graham, and all nine members of the plan commission were there, and I thought it was a good meet.
Yeah, it was.
It was a good meet. On August the twenty-sixth, I toured the new culinary arts kitchen classroom at Tell City Junior Senior High School, it's an amazing facility that they developed there, their culinary arts program continues to grow, I would recommend, if you haven't seen it, you go take a look at that, I mean, it, it blew me away, just compared to what they were in, to what they have now. Yesterday, I attended the State Board of Accounts entrance interview meeting, substituting for my friend Gerald, they're gonna be auditing the twenty-three and twenty-four years, Connie, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
They expect to have their report, or they expect to be finished by mid-October, I believe she said. And then my partner in pride, recipient for this month, is Anita and Brett Sanders at five twenty, Tenth Street, it's a neat, one of the older homes in Tell City, the home was actually built by Brett Sanders' great-grandfather, and so there's a lot of history with that home, but it's a, so, anyway, that concludes my report, thank you.
Your folks?
Thank you.
Is this figure of the people that relocated, or citywide?
Countywide.
Relocated, I see, they've moved here, and attained that ninety-nine thousand dollars per year, and got this.
Yeah, but they, some live in Tell City, some may live out in the county, in Troy, but most are in, yes, that's correct.
Yeah, that's, those are the most...
All right, Mike, you're up.
My partner in pride is Sandy and Danny Peckinpaw, at eighteen oh two Thirteenth Street, on the corner of Thirteenth Street and Watts. Beautiful home, well-kept.
Did you say eighteen oh two what?
Yeah, I'm gonna get the right address.
I just missed it.
Thirteenth Street.
Thirteenth Street, okay.
On the corner of Thirteenth and Watts.
It's a running joke, he gives the wrong address.
I just didn't get it written down, so...
No report.
All right, Brett?
I'm not gonna whine about it anymore.
Okay. Okay. All right, we'll move on. Brian, partner in report, and partners in pride?
Okay, I also attended the planning commission meeting with, with Larry, and it was really a good meeting. And I think he said something about, maybe it was October, I think, Larry, when he said he'd break ground, I thought that's when they said October.
Yeah, I'm, I'm giving the better of it.
Yeah, I am too, when he said it'd be up into the next year. Also, the twenty-fifth, I attended the LEPC meeting. I've earned some preparedness up at patio. They're thinking about doing a exercise, joint exercise with Perry Central and all the school systems, and that was a pretty informative meeting. My partners in pride for September is Doctors Matthew and Megan Butler at twenty-six, twenty-seven Tell Street. And a really nice home, where they keep it all looking nice.
Beautiful.
I think that's it.
All right, Gerald?
My partner in pride is McCall Meeks at fourteen, fourteen, twentieth. They were tickled to death when I turned to talk to them. They had nice flowers and stuff in front of it.
Yeah.
I appreciate Larry's seven for me for that meeting. I had another commitment. If I did go down and talk to the State Board of Accounts, I think they sent all of us a survey.
They did.
They would like that response. Or you can, I'll walk down there and talk to them, and the lady was real nice, and me and her went through it and says, you're done. So if you get a chance to come down there, and they're not really swamped, you can.
Don't come this week. We're on a train the rest of this week, so next week.
You can do it there. Chris called me, the mayor said, you go over and talk to them, so.
Go up there and get, knock it out. So, yeah.
Make sure that you do that, because of.
You have to. They'll knock, they'll chase you down if you don't.
Yes, yes.
They won't come to your house, they said, but they'll get close.
Or they'll send us after.
They'll send us, I think.
I just hope, for the good of the council, we can work this budget without making any more cuts, but I don't know.
Gerald?
We'll, we'll have a big, maybe some solutions after tomorrow, I don't know.
Yeah. I think so.
I'm not against giving people raises if we got the money.
Yeah.
If we give the place 2.5, we gotta give the other employees 2.5. I feel, you know, if you're gonna do it, you gotta go across the board.
I think it's definitely important to look at everything we can to.
Yes, we can. I mean, I must, them guys have earned their money out there on that trash truck and moving snow in the winter and weed eating up there by McDonald's, and that's hard work.
It is.
And, so, anyway, that's all I got.
Okay. Any, normally it's asked from the city attorney, but he's not here this evening, so any statements or comments from the clerk treasurer?
Well, they all stole my thunder. I was gonna let everyone know the State Board of Accounts is here to audit us for twenty-three and twenty-four, and remind the council members to please answer their email or Kevin, see them in person. And that is all I have.
Okay. All right. My partners in pride are gonna do it now. I'm chose the F-five car wash. So that's up there where the, we used to call the superwash that they tore down, they're building this new car wash with this tallest ginormous roof I've ever seen in a car wash, but it, it's looking good, it's taking shape, so appreciate their investment in the community and look forward to seeing it completed, and so. That's my partners in pride for this month.
Locally built, Arnold.
Yeah. Locally built, good point. All right, old business, we don't have anything, so we'll jump down to new business. We removed item A, so we'll just go to item B, additional appropriations. You should have a copy of that in your folders. You're like me and didn't lose it almost in the budget stuff. You guys have any questions? Do you want? Do you want me to read it, or do you wanna read it, or?
I can read it, that's fine, Gerald, just questioning.
I think the council president's supposed to, and attorney, no, it's not getting back.
Additional appropriation resolution 2025-16, whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate additional funds beyond those that were appropriated in the annual budget now they're far. Section one, be it ordained by the city of Tell City, Perry County, Indiana, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named for the purposes specified subject to laws governing the same. The city general fund, board of public works budget, equipment repair, fifteen thousand. Out of the police department for supplies, one thousand. Out of dispatch for health insurance, thirty-five thousand, and utilities, eight thousand, for a total city general fund budget of fifty-nine thousand. Concession stand fund for supplies, which is beverage, food and beverages, of three thousand dollars, and that's the total. And if you have any questions on any of those, I can explain it.
What's the equipment repair for?
The equipment repair is because the line item is currently in the red, and we have had several large bills on that. We had to have a dump truck fixed that was over ten thousand dollars, and so that made our line item in the red, plus we don't know what's gonna happen between now and the end of the year. Does that sound good, Jim?
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Larry, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And I'm sending it down for your signatures.
Okay, all right. Moving on to new business now. Item C, discussion on the twenty-twenty-five Rivers Edge Animal Shelter Budget. So we touched on it briefly in our previous meeting, so I just want, this is. Huh? Previous meeting, well, previous line item, I'm sorry, this is a long one. Now I'm getting, you're rubbing off on me, Connie.
I am.
Okay, so, think back last year, and the Molly with the Rivers Edge requested fifty thousand dollars from the council during, kind of near, during the budget time. And they decided that they could do thirty-six thousand, and that would get, divide that up by nine, would get it up to September, and then here, when September comes around, they would consider filling that gap between the fifty and the thirty-six to make that that full fifty that she additionally, she initially requested. Does everybody remember that?
Yep.
Okay. That, Molly?
It'll actually come out to forty-eight.
Would it?
If you.
If they give you fourteen thousand, that'd be fifty, right?
No, you're gonna do four, four thousand a month for three months will be twelve thousand.
Oh.
Well, that, so the thirty-six.
If you kept it at the full.
If you kept it the full, I was gonna increase it to get you your full fifty somehow.
Yeah.
I thought we agreed to take it to fifty.
No, we.
If we, if we had the money.
Yes, I think that was kind of it. I'm trying to get your money, Molly. Chill out.
I'm just, I'm just stating what, what we've been given.
Yeah.
The current contract ends September, September thirtieth, is that correct?
Um.
Yes, yes.
Something, yeah, I don't remember the date. I didn't bring that, but.
I have that up here with me, it's September thirtieth.
So I just wanted, you know, I hope the council can, you know, definitely considers this. Like I said before, I know we talk about, what Larry, you made a good point. I understood what you were saying, but I look at it as a donation to helping an organization like the museum, or the regional arts, or the Tell City Strong and some other ones, you know, maybe in the past, but I look at it, I know it's a lot larger number, but, I mean, we do, there's no denying, we don't have an animal problem, and not in this, in the city, but county overall. Tell City's not unique to this either. Just wanna see a way to help with that. And I know Molly and Ann and her employees, they do go above and beyond, more than they should sometimes, and she knows that, but she definitely has a heart for them, and I think she's trying her best to work for what she's got.
So we'll have to advertise additional appropriation.
Yes, you will, yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we extend the current contract through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, in the amount of twelve thousand dollars.
Okay, there's a motion made by Larry for twelve. Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Second by Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
We have that in general, huh?
Yes, we do.
Counsel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I know Molly's appreciative, she fired crime back at her. I know it's only twelve thousand, but it means a lot to her.
Very much so.
So, that concludes the business, so mayor's report. I just wanna thank everybody for their hard work during Switzer Fest. It was a good festival this year. Thank you to the Half Pot, everybody who volunteered for that. We've got a lot of exciting things coming up this fall. We've got Tell City Strong's gonna have their event in October, that little chili thing, and Connie and I've kicked the idea around of maybe just doing a little chili, just our own dollars, city hall employees or council wants to be in part of that, you know? I think it'd be kind of fun. We enjoyed, Connie and I did it last year, we really enjoyed it. We actually made little baby grilled cheeses, and that was a hit. Well, we all, it was a team effort, you know? I may have helped some, but we enjoyed it. Maybe get the street department out there and see who makes better chili, city hall or the street department, right? Jim's like, oh, no, I might be, but make it fun. Yeah, it's council versus the city hall, that'd be fun. But it, it's a really good event in the community here, and I know Mike's on Tell City Strong and does a lot of it too, and it, it's something I hope everybody takes time to come in for, and then obviously in October, there's something every weekend in Perry County, from Shubal Village to the Kennelton Fest, Heritage Festival they have there. Missing something, I'm interested in something at Rome even, but I might be missing that. A lot of great things going on, so make sure you stay up on those things, so. I don't have anything else, really.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Larry, second by?
Second.
Brian, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Meaning?
Thank you.
Phil, Phil.
Thank you.
Chris, Philip just texted.